The Prince William County School Board is now returning to open session from closed Moving on to 801, approval of the closed session consent agenda. I need a motion.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session consent agenda as recommended.
Madam Chair, second.
Please vote.
Motion passed.
Moving on to 901, closed session certification. I need a motion. A motion is in order.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session of Prince William County School Board meeting of March 22, 2018 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certify that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters were identified in the motion convening the closed session meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I second.
Thank you. Please vote.
The vote is seven yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to 1001, public hearing, 2019 CIP budget. Mr. Klein. Now, as we look at this public hearing, I wanted to make a couple of notes that those persons wishing to speak, you will be given five minutes. Three minutes. You can only speak on the, there's no citizens' time this evening, so you can only speak on the budget. Other items are not up for discussion to include those candidates running for the interim I will call you by name, and you may come to the podium and speak, give your name, your, the usual thing that we do for citizens' time. These are the names that I have. Elizabeth Volhar, Catherine Medesso, I hope that I have that correct, Jennifer Zook, Karen Green, John Gray, and signing up at the door, Mark DeAngelo, Riley O'Casey, and Marquise Bryant. Let's start with Elizabeth Volhar. We'll have three minutes, and you will get a warning. Thank you. Elizabeth Volhar is not here. How about Karen?
Dr. Walts, in the board. My name is Karen Green. I'm a mom of two, and I've lived in Manassas for the last eight years. My youngest daughter is currently a student at Stonewall Middle School. Both of my children have suffered at the hands of a bully with anxiety and depression and other mental health issues running rampant among our children. Readily available counselors and security-equipped schools are needed now more than ever. I've known of a few times that my children didn't receive the attention that they needed. I've been told that my child had to sign up to see a counselor, only to wait more than a day to be called back down to their office. And just last week, my daughter found a note in her locker saying, "Go kill yourself, and I hope you die," amongst other things. She told a friend, a teacher, and then went to her counselor. Her assigned counselor, Counselor A, was busy with another student, so she went to Counselor B. The SRO was also brought over to hear what happened. She was unsent back to class, told that they would handle it. What was wrong with this response? One, my child was sent back to class, and I was not notified. And number two, Counselor B didn't communicate the situation with Counselor A, so that when I called later, Counselor A didn't have any idea what happened, and Counselor B was gone. So there was no resolution. After speaking through email with the principal, and after this situation, the only positive recourse was to change my daughter's locker. The student responsible is getting away with this because the camera in that area was out of range of my daughter's locker, so there's no way to discipline this child for their reckless conduct. Thankfully, she's safe, and nothing has happened. But my child is left to walk around the school, wondering who said these horrible things. Who can she trust? Wouldn't you be paranoid as well? With more cameras, my child's perpetrator would have been caught, and with adequate counselors, I would have been notified about this horrible event. So, we need more counselors, and we need more security cameras at Stonewall Middle School and throughout county. Please. Thank you very much.
Jennifer Zook. John Gray. I want to remind, again, remind you that this is about budget tonight, and so please keep your remarks related to that subject.
Good evening. My name is John Gray. I've been president of the Okeechobee district for the last 30 years. In reviewing the budget, I was saddened to read that the Title I program for reading first was cut by, the funding was cut by $4.8 million. And it saddens me that this is cut, because that program, if I remember correctly, serves primarily elementary school students in 26 high-poverty districts. And these are our most vulnerable students, citizens, and we're cutting out reading. We're not cutting, we don't have, we don't have the funding for it. So, my purpose is suggesting possible ways to look at it. I don't know if you've addressed it yet, but in looking at the budget, a couple of things stood out. Well, first of all, 4.8 million on a $1,800 million budget is less than one-half of 1%. We've got to be able to find that money. And a perusal of the budget shows in the information technology services budget, there's a 6.5 increase in maintenance service contracts over the last five years, and it's almost doubled in the last two years. Maybe we could look at that. In the section of benefits and reserves, there's a total of $5.8 million increase in the last five years, meaning from fiscal '15 to fiscal '19. But included in that $5.8 million, there's $3.8 million alone just on contracts, and another $2.6 million in a reserve called a holdback allocation reserve, which is new this year. Again, I don't know what those reserves are, but my point is those two budgets alone, which are new, exceed the $5.8 billion. Maybe we can look inside there for some of that money. In the budget for fixed charges, there's an $11.1 million budget expenditure for bus replacements. Couple of points on that. A quick review on the internet shows that the average school bus, 65,000 to 85,000, so divide that into 11.1 million, that says that we have, we're buying 130 buses. So part of my question is, why are we making a capital expenditure through the operating budget? Okay? When you do capital expenditures through the operating budget, it squeezes out operating expenses such as $4.8 million for the reading first program. Let's see, what else? Oh, what I did notice is since fiscal year 2000, the state revenues have increased $75 The debt service has increased $6.8 million, and the total combined county transfer for operating and for debt services increased $29 million. It just seems to me logically that there is someplace inside that budget that we can find $4.8 million to fund this program.
Mr. Gray, I'm afraid your time is up.
Oh, is it really? My apologies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark DeAngelo.
Okay. All right. Good evening, Madam Chairman Jesse, and members of the Prince William County School Board and superintendent concerned citizens. On behalf of the school social workers, we would just like to say thank you for your unanimous vote to add 12 new school social worker positions, in addition to the two that had already been proposed in the 2019 budget, and supporting our human trafficking prevention program. We would also like to thank the members of the community that expressed their concerns about the very critical needs of our students and families within the schools. We appreciate your voice. The strength of your voice not only raised the awareness of safety concerns and the need for additional mental health supports in schools, but your voice also made known the very critical behind-the-scenes roles that school social workers play in the lives of students and families within schools today. The voice, your voice and vote benefits the lives of 91,000-plus students and families. So, thank you. We also, with additional support, the school social workers will be able to provide more direct services to students, and less of our time will be monopolized by report-writing and sitting in meetings. We look forward to continuously being part of the solution to serve our schools, working collaboratively to connect with more youth and their families, and to contribute to making our schools a safe environment. We also look forward to continuing our work towards meeting the VDOE standards of quality ratio of 1 to 1,000 in the near future. Again, thank you for your support, for your validating our role as school social workers, and with your voice, your vote, and your commitment. Just last parting thought, this is a wonderful step forward for our department, because as an educator once stated, you cannot, you cannot teach the head when the heart is broken and the mind is troubled. So, thank you very much for all that you've done for us, and we look forward to a wonderful 2018-19 school year.
Thank you. I'm just going to break protocol a little bit to say that I appreciate the fact that you came to the board, and I love the T-shirts. Thank you very, very much. Our next speaker is Riley O'Casey.
So, first time I'm using this. I'm a little nervous. Good evening, board members. Dr. Walts, my name is Riley O'Casey, and my address is on file. Tonight, PWEA would like to make a final request for the superintendent's proposed budget to include both a step and a COLA for all staff members. Thank you again, Dr. Walts, for ensuring a step for all staff. With this in mind, and in order to help restore our salaries after years of frozen steps, we would once again urge you to add a cost-of-living adjustment for all employees. We will lose the best and brightest to surrounding counties. Fairfax County has budgeted for a step for all eligible employees, a 1% cost-of-living adjustment, and additional money to all steps in the teacher scale to help make their scale more attractive for recruitment. Loudoun County has also budgeted for both a step and a COLA, with the amount of the COLA varying on where employees are on the salary scale. You must approve a budget this evening, but we encourage you to look closer to provide additional pay to retain our hard-working employees. We understand that with any budget, there are priorities to fund goals, but we would like to see a public discussion of what it would take to continue to show our educators that they are valued. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marquise Bryant. Is Marquise present? According to my list, this ends the, all persons have spoken. There being no other citizens indicating a wish to speak on this subject, I declare I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. Moving on to the approval, on approval of the public meeting agenda, a motion is in order.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Second, I need a second.
Madam Chair. I second.
The vote is seven yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to adoption of the consent agenda, a motion is in order.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
The vote is seven yes unanimous.
Moving on to 1401, this is an action item. A motion is in order.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve FY 2018 end-year spending per attachment.
I need a second.
Madam Chair. I second.
The vote is seven yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to 1402, FY 2019 CIP approval. This item is on for action. A motion is in order.
Madam Chair, I move that Prince William County School Board want to approve the FY 2019 CIP and the FY 2019 school budget in total amount of $1,508,716,252. And further, to approve the revenue-sharing agreement between Prince William County Board and county supervisors and the Prince William County School Board that provides 57.23% of general county revenues be transferred to the school division for the operations of FY 2019. And further, three, direct superintendent put forward the requested school budget by funds totals to the Prince William Board of County Supervisors. And further, four, request Prince William Board of County Supervisors to approve and appropriate the FY 2019 school budget by lump sum appropriation, the amount of $1,508,716,252 by fund totals as in previous year.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I second.
Discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I want to say, you know, looking at this, I have been very impressed with the way this board came together in our work in markup sessions, the collaboration, and the, and what we accomplished, in my opinion, you know, and I want to address this. Oh, Ms. Ross, oh, there's a phone. She's going to kill, she's going to take that phone out. Okay. I want to say, I do not believe that any of my fellow board members are anti-teacher. I think when we have a budget and a work session and a markup session, we have competing priorities. I did at the beginning of that session make a proposal for the 1% COLA at the start of that. That was the first thing that actually happened that night. Now, I will say, although it failed, and I wish it would have passed, had it passed, a lot of good things that came out of the collaboration and meeting would most likely have failed, and we'd be at a very different situation today. For example, I don't think I could have voted with having that additional money for the, for the COLA to add 12 social workers. I don't think we probably could have added all the security upgrades. And Ms. Ralston, I mean, again, you know, attributing Ms. Satterway for the social workers, Mr. Trenum for the security, Ms. Ralston for the bus driver pay scale, a lot of good things, and I think collaboration came out of that. And although, again, I wish, you know, what my priority at that time would have been, I do believe in the end, a lot of great things came out of that work session and the collaboration that we came together. And so we'd be at a very different point with a lot of these things that came out of that, had the COLA passed. I still love the COLA and wish it would have passed, but again, we have competing priorities, and it's a balancing act. When you take something, the other thing's got to get cut, and we have a very tight budget with what we have. We lost a lot of funding with the state, with the special education and the regional co-ops. That hurt us, and so we're trying to find areas and bring things together. And, and again, I just want to reiterate that I'm very happy with this board and what we accomplished together and the priorities that we came forward with. Although not everything each of us wanted passed, a lot of good stuff did come out of that meeting for the betterment and improvement of this county. Thank you.
Anyone else for discussion?
I'm sorry, I got to read my conflict of interest statement. Sorry. Before I vote, I apologize. Declaration of personal interest on matter affecting close relative of school board member pursuant to Policy 114 and Regulation 114-1, Conflict of Interest and Virginia's Local and State Conflict of Interest Act, in conjunction with the school board's vote on the budget, I'm confirming in open session that the school board, the superintendent and his staff, and by virtue of this declaration, the public have been informed by the fact that my wife is an employee of the Prince William, is an employee of the school board and is so employed prior to my election to the school board. I confirm this relationship will not prevent me from voting on this matter or any other matter impacting teachers impartially, fairly, objectively, and solely in the public interest. Justin David Wilk, 32218.
Mr. Trenum, I think.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to follow up on Mr. Wilk's comments. First off, I agree with everything that Mr. Wilk said. I think he was, he was spot-on there. We all, we all have different, we all are trying to bring different perspectives, and we are, we have competing priorities that we are all trying to, trying to balance. As far as the COLA, the COLA piece, because that's been a hot, a big topic, a 2% COLA is about $15 million, and I think it's irresponsible for us to start talking about those kinds of dollars if we don't have enough, if we don't take the opportunity to actually find out where they come from, and where, how we're going to pay for that. Over the years, I've, I've had conversations with different, different teachers in our schools, different staff members, and we've talked about, you know, straight COLAs. There's been discussions, extra pay, extra pay for teachers that teach SOL classes. I've heard of extra pay for department heads. Talking about different teachers, I have concerns about the way our stipends are funded for volunteering, for sponsorship for after-school programs and things like that. We've had ideas about having master teachers, and there's lots of great ideas flowing, flowing out of there, but I think if we're going to, if we're going to really address those, we need to address them in a comprehensive way and look at those. These types of things, you can't really piecemeal and do them justice, and do the people justice, most importantly. I think we would have all liked to have been able to give a higher pay increase, but like I said at the, at the work session, I think we are, as a board, we're going to have to look at doing some more creative, more targeted, targeted, targeted actions in the future if we want to accomplish some of that with some very specific goals in mind. So, once again, thank you, Mr. Wilk. Like I said, I think you had some very good words. And then the last thing to just tell everybody is, you know what, this is all dependent on what happens at the state level, so we could be back here again in a couple, a few more months and doing all this all over again, so, thank you. That's it.
Anyone else for discussion? Mr. Dolch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The budget processes are always interesting and a time to really work through priorities, and I think we have a number of good priorities that we've identified that we have in the budget here. We've got the independent non-traditional school is going to be a landmark for the, for the county in the services that we provide, and it's going to be very well-funded to provide top-line services and really put the county as a cutting edge. We've got other funding restorations as we work to move forward in different areas here in the county. We've, of course, added a number of items during the budget markup related to school safety, related to social workers, counselors, bus drivers, all key, key issues, and so there are, there are definitely a number of important and positive things here. I think one of the things that I've been, I think has come out of the last few weeks though, is an interest in codifying for the future our budget processes, because I think we've only barely begun to scratch the surface on looking at the budget. One budget session, budget work session, one markup is, is just a start, and it just gets the, the community input beginning and the creative and collaborative juices from board members beginning. And so I look forward to, in the future, codifying that process so we can actually compare competing priorities, establish, and establish which we think may be more important, and really dig into how, how different monies are being used and what, where we may be able to establish savings, where we may be able to weigh different competing And I think that's going to, could be very helpful in terms of the COLA discussion that continues. I would like to, if we end up coming back to the budget this year, see further discussion about what it would take to fund even a part of that, so we can continue to weigh that discussion. One thing, as we send the budget to the board supervisors, of course, all of the money here is dependent on the board supervisors, and I think the, the last piece of the school safety, or one additional piece of school safety, something that would be completely dependent on the board supervisors in terms of funding, but it would be helpful to have a community discussion of increasing the number of SROs we have in schools to provide the safety that's needed. We just saw this week a situation where an SRO was able to really quickly stop a shooting, and that is an important safety consideration for the community to have, but the funding for that would have to come through the board supervisors. So, just a few thoughts before we head into the vote.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you. I also would like to say ditto on what my fellow board member, Mr. Wilk, said earlier when addressing the budget, and add to that, and just to let teachers know, because I don't believe it's been mentioned enough, we do go every year and lobby down in Richmond for a cost-of-living increase heavily, and I know that we've done so every year that we've been on the board. This year, I even mentioned that Prince William County brought in the most amount of tax tourism dollars, and maybe we could like, I don't know, use some of that towards funding for teachers. You know, it, it isn't a discussion that comes up once a year for us. It's a discussion that comes up all year round. It may not be discussed in, in a manner that everyone is in agreeance to, but it is something that's always on our minds up here in one way, shape, or another, and it's not ignored. I, we even had a presentation from staff and looked at We even had a presentation from staff and looked at comparable budgeted items in our surrounding counties versus what we heard from public comment. So, it's something that we don't take lightly, and we do spend a lot of time, I think, from my own personal opinion, on that very issue, because it is important. A majority of us, not just teachers, but a majority of us that live in this county work, you know, are, either we work here, we live outside, or we live here and we work outside. So, it doesn't just come to mind when it comes to teachers. It affects really all of us, and I would continue to encourage the public to go before the board of county supervisors, because they are instrumental in providing us funds, and what we can do with those, if we get more funds, what we can do with them would be more great things. So, we do determine how we spend what we get, and we do the best that we can to provide the maximum amount of reach for those dollars for all of our people, not just of our students, but for our staff as well, so it's a large consideration. And I just wanted to remind the public that that's something that doesn't just come up for us at budget time. And also, in preparation for budget next year, we do, as a school division, have a whole website page dedicated to the budget process and the timelines involved, and how many work sessions we'll have, and exactly what goes into us getting to this point where we make a vote on the budget. And I would encourage the members of the public now to start looking at that for next year, or even in preparation of us coming back again to make some decisions, so that you have ample time to get your questions, to look at information that may be out there, so you're prepared next year if you want to join. Several of us on the board have committees for budgets. If you want to have commentary or questions posed to your board member ahead of time, that information is out there and available to the public. We don't say that enough, I think, but I think that goes to Mr. Deutsch's point, that there's a process out there, and that, you know, we're always open to suggestions, so, but that's what we have right now at this point, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Then I would like to speak also. I've been in this county a long time, and it's a very large county, and I have had the opportunity to work with some of the most phenomenal people in the world. I mean, my 20 years as a principal was perhaps one, it really has been the most fulfilling aspect of my life, and being on this board is very, very different for me. I hope that what I brought to the board was that I saw the work that was being done by teachers, and I know that they, I had teachers who stayed until 10 or 11, or I had to go to work on Sunday, not because I needed to work on Sunday, but they would say, "Who's gonna open the building? We need to be in the building." They worked weekends, they worked nights. I was a little bit disappointed, because somewhere in the mix, I felt the psychologist got left by the wayside. I worked in those special ed, IEP meetings, and the enormous amount of reports that were required by people, individuals, was just overwhelming. I really don't know how they managed it, and so, I will say what I said at the markup, that these additional social workers, I hope that we don't end up with them having the same workload that they had, and somebody needs to make sure that that occurs. There were things that, I'm still concerned about some items. I've discussed those items with superintendent. That school at Aqua Quarter, that in the CIP is something that concerns me and something that will be addressed. And I want to say to Mr. Klein's office, questions from one, how many inputs do you have? Six inputs of questions? I commend you. Were they mostly Mr. Trentum's? You know, he needs to have a full-time secretary, but this is his, all of us on this board have passions, and his passion is budget, and my passion is student learning and teachers. The one thing that I think is missing in the, we're always looking at higher salaries for teachers, but I think that more options for teacher movement on a scale, there are no options, and I used to do a lot of mentoring people who wanted to be principals in my dining room, and I, my question was, "What do you want to be when you grow up?", every time we had an evaluation, because I was always trying to move people up, and finally, a teacher said to me, "Mrs. Jessie, I know you want me to be a principal, but I don't want to be one." I think she saw what we did, but I think that we need to look at a ladder for teachers. So, when a teacher wants to make more money, there should be other options for them to be able to move up. Some people really do just love working with other teachers, and so, if we could look at that down the road, I would like to see that looked at down the road. And also, as we look at all the work that we're doing with robotics, it's only a part of the STEM process, and I think we really need to look at science labs for all the school, but we need to begin to move into STEM labs and move along with this global competition that we're in. And that ends my comments, and there being nothing further to come before this board, this meeting.
No, I have to vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry, the vote.
That's an interesting question.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I think I was anxious, right, to get out of here. Okay. We have a vote, please.
Motion passed.
And now, I can say, oh, what's the other? Voted on March 20th relating the, are we on 1402?
No, I'm sorry, 1501.
I think I said 1501. 1501.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board confirm the poll dated March 20th, 2018, relating to the March 21, 2018 school board meeting.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Rawson.
I second.
Discussion?
Madam Chair. Just want to make a point real quick. My name's not recorded to vote because of just the tight timeframe and my unavailability in that timeframe. I normally do vote in things, but I'm gonna abstain because I didn't vote in this poll.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wilk. I didn't understand, what did you say?
I said I wasn't able to vote in the poll because of how fast the timeframe was that was needed, so because I didn't vote in the poll, I'm gonna abstain from the vote.
Any more discussion? Yes.
Just a clarification that I want to make sure that I understand this correctly. So, we are voting to confirm the results of the poll, correct? We don't, are we do not, we are not voting on the item in the poll, or are we?
We're voting to confirm the poll.
So, because I voted no in the poll, so should I vote no here, or should I vote yes to confirm it?
We're confirming the poll.
We're confirming the poll? The question, did you have that question of, who are you directing that question to?
I was, I directed it to the attorney.
Yes, you're, I'm sorry, you're voting to confirm the results of the poll, and the clerk could announce what the poll was.
I don't need that. I just want to make it clear, because that's bounced back and forth a couple times over the years.
She announced the poll and the results, then it would be, vote in favor of it.
Okay, that's fine.
Any more discussion?
No, I'm good. It's in the record, so I'm fine with that.
Okay. Please, okay, every, no one? Okay, please vote.
Deutsch, motion passed.
The phone was in shock, we're out of here.
They just, they just won't let us leave, okay? There being nothing further to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned.